All the meetings are ordered. I'd like to welcome everybody to tonight's Board of Education meeting. Would you all rise for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence? Would you all keep Mr. Bob Witherow in your thoughts and prayers? Mr. Witherow is a longtime teacher in our district and a former superintendent of the schools. Annie, would you raise your hand?
I want to be just as proud of the United States of America and to the Republic of the British States, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. I have the motion to approve the tonight's Board of Agenda meeting.
Aye.
Moved by Flo, seconded by Judy. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. First item is our administrative reports, and I'd like to welcome our new superintendent, Dr. John Bell.
Thank you, Mr. Hattori. Just a few things. First thing off, this is officially only my third day on the job, but it feels like a lot longer than that already because we've been running around all summer. And I wanted to thank everybody involved in trying to get the schools open. For opening day today, with all the movement that was involved with the middle school kids moving over here, and then high school, ASK, and HBE had to make all kinds of arrangements and make room. PPS office now is located in that building until further notice. So everybody pitched in to really make it work, to figure out a way to pack four schools into three structures. So thank you to everybody for that. Opening day for the students went really well in the four schools today. It's a shame to see it rain on opening day, just because everybody's got their new haircuts and their new sneaks, and then they're out in the rain, you know, and you hate to see that for the kids. But it's a great test because usually the first day of school is the best attendance of the year, and literally nobody walked. Everybody hitched a ride today. So we had the test of all tests with the amount of cars that were on campuses. It was really hard on both campuses, but if we can get through that, any other day will be easier than that. So we're going to be, we'll be okay. The buses won't continue to run late for a couple of days as we work it out. The reason the buses run late on this campus for the secondary, it's predominantly the seventh graders, and you have to kind of help them find their buses and things like that because they're the newbies here. They have a hard time getting their locker open at the end of the day, they have a hard time finding... So then the buses leave here later than normal, and then the drivers are taking their precautions to make sure everybody's getting off at the right place. So then a lot of times we get to the elementary later than normal, and then you know what it's like trying to get the kindergartners and the first graders on for the right buses. So, but each day this week, all the parents at home should see the bus coming a little bit earlier each day as everybody starts to get into the swing of things. So don't panic if the bus is late. The bus is coming, trust me. We're not going to keep your kid all night. We want to go home too. We'll make sure you get your kiddos back, but it'll just take a few days, just like always, it takes a few days for, to get all those routines in place, particularly with our kindergartners, to make super, super sure that they're on the right buses. The other thing I wanted to just mention about Mr. Witherow, he was a teacher in high school, he was my ninth grade history teacher, he was assistant principal in high school, he was a principal in the middle school, he was the ASI, he was superintendent and a board member, so he did just about everything you could imagine. And most people in community don't know, he was a heck of a football coach. He was the line coach under Coach Joe Viglione for 27 years, and an amazing guy. So it was very nice for Mr. Hattori to have the moment of silence tonight for him because he really was a special guy. Thirty-eight years he worked for the Port Jervis School District, and that's pretty impressive. Our thoughts go out to all the Witherows because he was an amazing guy and a great guy to learn from communities. That's all I have for you right now. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Dr. Bell. Next, Assistant Superintendent for Instruction, Dr. Natasha, welcome.
Just want to welcome everyone back to our first day of school. Like Dr. Bell said, it went very smooth, especially with rain. Even the rain couldn't dampen the excitement of our students and teachers today. I just want to shout out to our administration, our school counselors, buildings and grounds, teachers and staff, who spent endless hours planning the summer for this very day. It took a village to get this district where it was today with the capital projects. So I just want to thank everyone else, the teachers. We had a great opening superintendent conference day last week. The teachers were very excited moving into their space, there was a lot of welcoming of other staff. A little bit of stress with that as well, but most fall high spirits of anticipation. Our conference day last week, Thursday and Friday, included technology instruction, curriculum instruction, support, social emotional learning, mindfulness and wellness, as well as safety and multi-tiered systems of support training, which is also known as MTSS. And you'll start seeing some of the MTSS rolling out this school year. And we also had last week, at the beginning of last week, our new teacher orientation, which was a day and a half this year. We reviewed individual procedures for each building, they had planning time with their mentors, we had an overview of IEPs of 504, 101 TIC class, we talked about observations for the year, district technology and LAO2D requirements, and we also kicked off with a presentation by Mr. Marata for our book talk, which is what great teachers do differently. So that's about a week in a nutshell, and I just want to wish everyone a happy new school year.
Thank you very much. Next is our Superintendent for Business, Mr. John Campbell.
Thank you so much. I just want to welcome Dr. Bell and look forward to working together. Kind of exciting time. So every morning I give a project update, status is pretty much the same, they're continuing to have a basement, and they're almost done in the gyms and the stairwells, and so we begin to move on to the next phase. So they're still in the basement, but almost finished. That's it.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, our consent agenda items. Item A is the regular meeting, minutes of the regular meeting from August 23rd. Item B, the minutes for CSEA meetings from 8:23 and 8:24. Item C is the minutes for CBSD meetings from 7:07, 7:12, and 8:10. Item D, disposal of outdated direct physical equipment. Item E, disposal of textbook requests from Port Jervis High School. Item F, the 21, 22 annual financial statement, student activities account. May I have motion to approve those?
Aye.
Moved by Flo. Second?
Aye.
Seconded by Kara. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Well, we have the student board member, she has something she wants to share.
Okay, well, I'll let you do that before we move on. My apologies.
All good, thank you. Bye, everyone. We all had a good first day coming back. Like I said, it went decently smooth, especially with the middle schoolers coming into the high school. It was a little gym packed sometimes, especially by the rubber gym, but overall it wasn't bad. As part of the volleyball team, varsity volleyball, we wanted to thank you guys for allowing us to go to Camp Human Omnath last weekend. We really appreciate it. We had one of the best times of our lives. It was a very good team bonding experience. Like I said, the first day went well, and that's really all they have, is not much. But yeah, thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. Next, our personal employment items. Item A is retirement, support staff position 375, teacher A. Item B, resignation, support staff position 383, LMS electrical. Resignation to accept new positions, support staff position 53587, part-time clerk typist. Item D is resignation to accept new positions, support staff position 3697, school monitor. Item E is resignation to accept new position, coaching junior varsity boys soccer coach. Item F, our leave of absence. Item G is an appointment, vacancy 2421, curriculum coordinators and co-curriculum coordinators, coaching appointments for the 2022-23 school year. Item H is an appointment, instructional staff, vacancy 2455, position 2726, temporary special education teacher leave replacement. Item I is an appointment, administrative, arch principals for the 22-23 school year. Item J is an appointment, administrative staff vacancy 2457, position 358, probationary director of pupil personnel services. Item K, an appointment, support staff vacancy 2471, position 3811, probationary school monitor. Item L is an appointment, support staff, vacancy 2472, position 1368, probationary school monitor. Item N is appointment, instructional staff, vacancy 2461, position 3815, permanent elementary literacy instructional coach. Item N is an appointment, support staff, vacancy 2476, position 587, probationary cleaner. Item P is an appointment, instructional staff, vacancy 2480, position 87, temporary physical education teacher leave replacement. Item P is an appointment, support staff, vacancy 2481, position 542, provisional clerk typist. Item Q is appointment, support staff, vacancy 2482, position 590, probationary teacher A. Item R, an appointment, support staff, substitute cleaner. Item S, appointment, support staff, substitute school monitor. Item T, appointment, support staff, substitute LMS electrical. Item U, appointment, substitute teachers and nurses for the 22-23 school year. Item V is amendment to employment contract. Item W, increase of hours, support staff vacancy 2473, position 1274, permanent school monitor. Item X, increase of hours, support staff position 3742, teacher A. Item Y, amendment to board docs, personnel agenda item from July 19th, '22. Twenty twenty-two, excuse me. With that, may I have a motion on those, please?
Aye.
Seconded by Kara, seconded by Bill Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item Six are action items. First item, disapproval of the tax subsidiary resolution. May I have a motion on that?
Aye.
Second? Moved by Flo, seconded by Jason. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B is appointment, delete... Excuse me?
Yeah.
Yeah, delete evaluate of teachers 2022-23 school year, Brett Cancredi, Eileen Cook, Matthew Gennaro, Andrew Marata, Emily Meznick, and Stady Roosevelt. May I have a motion on that?
Aye.
Moved by Bill. Seconded by Annie. Thank you, Annie. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C are annual appointments for the 2022-23 school year revised. May I have a motion on that?
I'll go ahead.
Moved by Kara, seconded by Jason. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item D, approval of a resolution to execute the collective bargaining agreement between the Port Jervis City School District and Board of Education and the Port Jervis Teachers Union. And the resolution says, whereas the Board of Education, the Port Jervis City School District previously authorized and approved a certain memorandum of agreement between the Board and the Port Jervis Teachers Association dated January 11th, 2022, and whereas said memorandum of agreement has been incorporated by the parties into a more formal written collective bargaining agreement, therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby authorizes the Board President and the Superintendent of the School to execute said CBA on behalf of the Board. Moved by Judy?
Second.
Seconded by Annie. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item E is the appointment of Nancy Dunn to the Board of Education for the remainder of the 22-23 school year. May I have a motion on that? Moved by Annie. Seconded by Bill Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Nancy?
Nancy Dunn.
Nancy Dunn.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of school board member.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of school board member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you so much.
Nancy, welcome back and thank you for filling in for us. Appreciate it. Good to have you back.
Thank you.
Item F is the approval of the MOA between PCHAP and PJ Port Jervis Central School District. May I have a motion on that? Moved by Annie. Second? Bill Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item F is the policy first reading of policy numbers 7560, 1510, 5220, 5250, and the deletion of policy number 5221. May I have a motion on that?
Aye.
Moved by Flo. Second? Annie? Any questions?
Well, because it looks like there's two Fs.
Okay, okay. So it's, okay, very good.
It was letter G.
I had two Fs on mine. Like my reporter used to do. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item H is the policy first, first and final reading of policy 5210. May I have a motion on that?
Aye.
Moved by Judy. Seconded by Flo. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Next, our board members' comments. Annie, do you have anything?
I want to take this opportunity to now officially welcome John Bell as our new superintendent since you are now sitting here with us at the table. I'm so happy and cannot think of a better individual than we are superintendent and carry out the important work of leading such a wonderful family-oriented and caring school Also, I want to thank all school personnel for making a smooth and traditional opening day. And I want to do, take this opportunity to welcome my friend and my, again, my colleague, Nancy Dunn.
Thank you.
Thank you, Annie. Bill?
The only thing I have is that tomorrow night, you and Orange County School Board Association will be meeting again in person for the first time since COVID.
Okay.
And I will be attending that meeting, so I'll have to report at our next board meeting.
All right. Very good. Flo?
I'd just like to welcome everyone back to school. Thank everyone for all their extra gold and above, their duties of their jobs to make this happen, and just welcome for coming here. This is Bell.
Kara?
Oh, Nancy. Perfect. Thank you.
It's like she never left. I, too, just wanted to wish everyone a great opening day, and I wanted to thank the middle school staff. I attended orientation last week with my incoming seventh grader, my son, and it was apparent that the families were so relieved that, you know, we could send our students safely to attend at the high school. It's evident by the round of applause. And just from the bottom of my heart, as a parent, as a board member, thank you to all of the staff members who were involved in that process. I know there was a lot of planning and behind the scenes rearranging and making room at, you know, not just the middle school, but, you know, various schools throughout the district. But to be able to leave that orientation feeling good, and my son's excited, but as a parent to feel safe knowing that I'm sending him, you know, after driving by the middle school every day, thinking there's no way I want to, I want to send him there on September 6th. Thank you to everyone who was involved. That was, that was great to see walking into that orientation, not just, you know, Mr. Marata and Ms. Cook there, but they have now all of the personnel, the guidance councils, and everybody, they're not split up, they're all together, and they're safe. So thank you, that goes a long way. And certainly I want to welcome back to the district, Tony Durie, who is going to be such an asset to the PBS program in this district, the students, the staff, such a resource of wealth of knowledge and experience, and how fortunate we are to have you. Welcome back, Nancy. And I also want to just send a shout out to Quality Bus because the postpart said that my son was being picked up this morning at 6:41, and sure enough, 6:41 it rolled up, and there's a lot to be said for that. Thank you for transporting our most precious commodities safely and in such a timely manner. Excuse my hair, but like many of you, I spent dismissal outdoors, and I was speaking through chattering teeth trying to warm up. It was a long day, but a, but a one that ran smoothly. Wishing you a great school year.
Judy?
I, too. Would like to welcome back students, welcome back John Bell, welcome back Tony, and welcome back Nancy. And I'm so excited for all the students and the faculty and staff to get back to September.
Thank you, Judy. Annie?
I'm passing.
Okay.
I'm still new. I have to catch her up. Gosh.
Jason, just for the sake of echoing everybody else, a large collective welcome back to all. Thank you.
And Mr. Bell?
I also wanted to say, welcome back to Mrs. Durie. We are so excited to have you come back and be partnered up with your pal Peggy. Remember, you guys used to teach in high school together, now you're duo's back together, living in the suite up in that building. I don't think Peggy's thought of as a suite at all, I mean.
Oh, you should say it now, it's beautiful. I painted that green red. We have unpacked and are ready to go, so it looks great.
Well, Don, thanks to you and your guys, I know it was in rough shape when, when we started to lease, but they did a lot of, a lot of lipstick on it to get it looking good, so thank you for that. Welcome back, Tony.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, our dates to remember. Tuesday, September 6th was our first day of school. Wednesday, September 7th, ASK PTA meeting, 7:00 PM in the ASK library. Tuesday, September 13th, Port Jervis High School, PTSA meeting, 7:00 PM in the high school guidance conference room. Wednesday, September 14th, ASK open house, grades 1 through 3, 7:00 PM to 8:00 PM at ASK. Thursday, September 15th, ASK open house, grades 4 through 6, 7:00 PM to 8:00 PM at ASK. And upcoming dates in the district, Wednesday, September 21st, countywide early dismissal drill, Port Jervis Middle School open house, grades 7 and 8, 6:00 PM at Port Jervis High School. Thursday, September 22nd, Port Jervis High School open house, grades 9 through 12, 6:00 PM at the Port Jervis High School. Monday through Friday, September 26th through the 30th is the Port Jervis High School Spirit Week and pep rally at the Port Jervis High School. Wednesday, September 28th, HBE open house, grades 1 through 3, 7:00 PM to 8:00 PM at HBE. Thursday, September 29th, HBE open house, grades 4 through 6, 7:00 PM to 8:00 PM at the HBE. Friday, September 30th, varsity football homecoming game versus Liberty, 7:00 PM at Glenette Field. With that, could you go back to 7A, please? Excuse me?
7A, the committee reports, and then we have to appoint...
Oh, yes. I missed the committee report. Thank you. And we have committee reports still?
No, perfect. Okay.
You do, okay, Flo?
I just, I just want to invite everybody, this week, Sunday, September 11th, our service is still on and we're getting ready. Hopefully we will have nice weather, 8:30 in the morning at the Town and Gear Park Town Hall. As always, we will have the same program as we have been for the past twenty-some-odd years, and just forward to seeing as many of you as possible. Thank you.
We still have, with the resignation of Debbie Lash, we now have seats open on the education, the policy, and the safety committees. So if it would please the Board, if anyone would like to volunteer for those committees that aren't already on them, we'd love to have your input.
Annie?
I'll be on the policy.
Okay.
Do we have anybody for education?
I would love to, but unfortunately they're all during the day, so...
Yes, I know it makes...
I can do safety as well.
You can do safety.
Safety, great.
Thank you, Annie.
Oh, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We do have one item for executive session that came up. It should be a short executive session, and there will be no action. So I would like a motion to move into executive session, please? Moved by Flo. Seconded by Annie. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening.